Well, six o'clock. I'd like to welcome everybody to April 27th, 2017, the Mayor's meeting of the United City Council. So it's time for everybody to rise and have a good evening. Dear Lord, thank you for the privilege to gather tonight. The privilege we all have to serve our community, work for a better community, a town. Please bless our decisions tonight. They may be favorable in your sight, and we will be for the best of our community. Bless all the volunteers who've been working so diligently the last few weeks to clean up our town, to make it presentable for the big holiday that comes beyond. But most of all, bless everybody that has served this around the world, and help them be safe tonight. Thank you. Mr. Livinggood, would you lead us in the pledge?
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which is Sam's, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number two is attendance will be called.
Mr. Petty?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Livinggood?
Here.
Crone?
Here.
Swager?
Here.
Alvedras?
Here.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Agenda item number two is approval of extended agenda. Make a motion that we approve this concerned agenda.
Second.
Have a motion as second.
Crone?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
You have five ayes.
Agenda item number four is public comments and announcements. Public comments and announcements.
My name is Ted Riley. I'm a citizen of Guyman. Tonight, you as the council are going to elect your next mayor. And I would ask that this next mayor please be temperately make some comments about our great community and our citizens, especially if it's on a story or an issue that can attract national or state attention. I do.
Any other public comments or announcements? Agenda item number five, I'll turn it over to Mr. Swager, the vice mayor, to call for nominations of the mayor.
Good evening, everybody. First thing I want to do is read the duties to the mayor. Mr. Livinggood is new. The mayor shall preside at meetings of the council and shall certify and attract agreement of all ordinance, ordinances, and resolutions passed by. He shall be recognized as head of city for government for all ceremonial purposes by a government for the purpose of military law. He shall have no regular administrative duties except that he shall sign all competences and other written obligations by the city as the council may require. The vice mayor shall act as mayor during the absence, disability, or suspension of the mayor. I'll ask for nominations.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Mr. Larry Swager as Mayor of Guyman for the ensuing term.
I'll second that.
Crone?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Nay.
Alvedras?
Nay.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have three nays and two ayes.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kim Peterson as the mayor. I'd like to second that motion.
Swager?
Nay.
Crone?
Nay.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have three ayes and two nays.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kim Peterson as the mayor. I'd like to second that motion.
Swager?
Nay.
Crone?
Nay.
Alvedras?
Nay.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have three ayes and two nays.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kim Peterson as the mayor. I'd like to second that motion.
Swager?
Nay.
Crone?
Nay.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Nays.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have three ayes and two nays.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kim Peterson as the mayor. I'd like to second that motion.
Swager?
Nay.
Crone?
Nay.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have three ayes and two nays.
Agenda item number six, we call for nominations for vice mayor, and nomination for vice mayor.
I'd like to make the nomination for Larry Swager, the vice mayor. Second the motion.
Have a motion as second.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have three ayes and two nays.
Agenda item number six, we call for nominations for vice mayor, and nomination for vice mayor.
I'd like to make the nomination for Larry Swager, the vice mayor. Second the motion.
Have a motion as second.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Crone?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number seven is discussion of possible action on ordinance number 816, ordinance approving and adopting 2017 City of Guyman Comprehensive Plan Update, repealing all the ordinances and parts of ordinance in conflict with providing perseverance and clarity.
Mayor of Guyman, good evening. A pleasure to be in front of you all again. So for the second time, we're presenting for you the final draft of the Comprehensive Plan for the City of Guyman. And so tonight, we request its adoption. So to summarize, because as we presented before, for you all, for the public, this is the fundamental long-range planning document for the city to serve the community, to serve the city staff, to serve planning zoning commission, to serve you all. So in order to promote the public safety, welfare, public health of Guyman, we've taken all of the required steps through state statutes and through standard planning practice to present this Comprehensive Plan for adoption. That's over two or three years, two to two, three years, that the values, vision, goals of the City of Guyman has been taken in a snapshot and placed into this document. And the document is the end, this action plan, which is to serve as the guiding framework for items, more specific plans, because this is, this whole document is supposed to be reference, guidance, not law set in stone. So in order to guide the community forward, to make corridor plans, to make park healthy living plans, the, everything that's laid out on this board, on the side of the chambers, its point is to guide Guyman into the future. So we ask you that this guiding document be adopted so that, so that the specific action items can be fine-tuned and broadened into the future as well.
So I might just add, when we were here at your last meeting, it was requested that we meet with the new council member, which we have done, and we've gone through and explained and gone over our process. As Matt had pointed out, we have gone through an extensive public process. So the next step, once this is adopted, is to move into the implementation items, as he was mentioning, which would be the update of your code, looking at further planning efforts, maybe sub-area plans or corridor plans, working in the downtown area, maybe doing a downtown plan, working to update your parks master plan, and really fine-tuning that. Another strong piece would be to work with all of you to do a council strategic plan as well as a capital improvement plan update, so that you can really look at what you want to accomplish over the next five to seven years. And we've had some discussions with city manager Larry Mitchell on that and how we would be able to move forward and work with you to make that happen. But the important thing is to get this adopted and be able to move forward. So we ask for your adoption and support tonight. Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, first, I want to commend you for your perseverance during this. I know it's been a long journey since 2014, 15, the document that was given to us, and you guys have delivered on everything that we've asked. We've held the meetings that we've asked. We've demanded, asked for participation from the City of Guyman, from all the constituents that live in this area, everybody in the surrounding areas, and we have, you guys have held that, and I appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was a little bit of a challenge to pick up a plan that hadn't started and start with that process, not starting from new. So that was a little challenging for us, but thank you. We appreciate your.
I would like to just be clear, in implementation, nothing gets implemented or put into effect until it goes before the council. Is that correct?
Obviously, that's, yes, you are very correct with that. Yes. Yeah, there's still a lot of work ahead of us here, so. This is step one.
Any other questions or discussion?
I want to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 816 and ordinance approving and adopting 2017 City of Guyman Comprehensive Plan Update, item seven.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in seconds.
Crone?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Have a motion declared now.
I'll make a motion, we declare an emergency second.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Crone?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and give us about a week and a half to get copies out to you. We will get an electronic version up on the website within the next few days.
Please. And once again, Mr. Moore, Mr. North, thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
And not only the Comprehensive Plan, but also the appendices, which are important reference documents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number eight is discussion of possible action on approval of invoice number 3882 to the Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $20,000 for the 2017 Pioneer Days rodeo sponsorship. Why don't you come up and update us, Tita?
I didn't know if this invitation was here.
No.
I'd like to say that invoice number 3882 is actually not necessary right now because it's a convention and tourism reimbursement grant, and we have to prove through our final report that we've done everything according to the guidelines of convention and tourism in order to receive that funding. So if you want to hold off on approving that, then that's how the guidelines state. So we're prepared to do that.
Put them up on the way. Any discussion?
Thank you for the documentation you've.
Yeah, if you have any questions about that, I'm here. You can ask.
I just hope we have good weather.
Pardon?
I hope we have good weather next week.
Well, I've ordered good weather, but I've been chastised for asking for no rain during rodeo performances, so we'll take it after performances and after the parade and all that kind of good stuff. So Pioneer Days will be fun for everybody.
Do we need to make a motion to table? Probably should.
I make a motion to table item number eight. I'll second it.
Have a motion as second to table.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Crone?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you.
Okay, so just to be clear, do I need to come back to City Council after Convention and Tourism has approved the final report, just so I'll know what to prepare for you all? I mean, I want to make sure that you all get the documentation that you need.
That'll be the key, isn't it?
Yeah, I think you would have to bring it back. Well, you wouldn't necessarily have to bring it back, but I think the council has to approve the expenditure.
Okay.
So it will be back on an agenda.
Right.
Right.
Probably July or August. I don't know when.
Whenever they.
Convention and Tourism has their meeting.
Right, whenever they make the request.
Yes, okay.
I just hope you're profitable, is your.
Hopefully.
Oh, yeah. It looked kind of sad on there, didn't it? Okay, so any other questions? You guys know how to get ahold of me. I'm more than willing to answer any questions. I also encourage you to come out and enjoy, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Agenda item number nine is discussion and possible action on declaring surplus scrap pieces of brass. Staff report for the cut and drive.
Good evening. At the gas and water department, we've been trying to clean up the area, and we have some excess scrap that's just been sitting around. It's kind of a trip hazard. We need to declare it surplus so we can get rid of it.
Yeah, we want to do all this as a bulk versus trying to do it month to month. We don't have much success in getting any bids on a month-to-month basis, so we thought if we could accumulate this and go through the process of bidding, then we might get a better response.
We do approve. Declaring it surplus, what's the next step? What do you do then?
Well, we would, well, in that instance, we could.
We'd solicit proposals. We should have a list of three or four people who are interested in solicit bids or proposals from them. Bring that back for your approval.
We've done this in the past with, what's it?
This is, the things that this, this hasn't been taken out to the transfer station, this is just whenever they're working on something, replacing a piece, they would grab it and put it on in a tub, and then that tub has just overflowed over the years.
Understood.
Any other discussion? Motion?
That's good initiative, good aye. I propose that we declare surplus scrap pieces of brass, item nine.
I'd second that motion.
Have a motion as second.
Swager?
Aye.
Crone?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number 10 is discussion and possible action on nominations of three trustees to the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group Board of Trustees. Some of them sent a letter, and then there's, I think, a list, isn't there a list of all the candidates?
Ballot.
The ballot?
Yeah. And this, Mayor, is this just a formality?
No, this is our actual voting for that position, I believe. And I did get an email from one of the folks on the ballot, Larry Toma, who's the mayor of Elgin, Oklahoma. I think he's one of the few mayors. There's, well, there's another, Daniel Tarkington is a younger mayor. Larry's been a mayor of Elgin for 25 years, down by Lawton. He has put his name in the nomination form.
Who was that?
Larry Toma, and part of his email was he was kind of tired of, he was kind of tired of court or claims, so.
When does, is this, is there a due date on this? Is there a timeframe?
There is.
Yeah, there's a deadline. I'm not sure what it is.
Can I start first?
I think it's pretty close. Because they have their annual meeting in June, I believe. You said Daniel Tarkington? Daniel Tarkington's a young gentleman. He's a mayor at Collinsville, I believe.
Would it be okay to table this until we see, could we see that email, just of him putting his name on the ballot?
It's on the ballot, it's on. He just didn't, he just didn't write, send a letter, a letter requesting our vote.
See, it's not on the actual.
Oh, yeah. Well, he didn't submit a letter.
Okay.
Just the letters there. This is the full list. He's the mayor of Jacobin, Larry's.
He's a, to give you some background, he's been mayor in Elgin, I think, for 25 years.
But he's OML president.
He's a church God preacher, a good guy.
He was also the OML president one year.
I know who I'd like to nominate. I know the three that I'd like to nominate. Pam Polk, Earl Burson, and that Daniel Tarken. I like the fact that you've got two that are willing to re-up. You want to make that in the form of a motion? I can. Mr. Crone, have you got?
Would you say those three names again?
I said Pam Polk, Earl Burson, and Daniel Tarkington. No. Mr. Mitchell, do you know?
Yes, sir.
Do you know any of these people?
I know most of them.
Most of them?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think you could make a wrong selection. Most of them have had considerable municipal experience, served as managers or mayors for some time, have been around Oklahoma for most of their career, so any of the group would be good selections.
Do you have any preferences?
Well, the only, the only other person on this list that I would maybe think about would be Janice Kane, who was the manager in Marlowe for about seven years, and now the manager in Altus. I've known Janice a long time. I think she'd be a very good applicant or a board member. That's the only person I would suggest, other than the ones that you chose.
Do you prefer her over Daniel Tarkington?
No, I'd maybe prefer her over Earl Burson.
Okay. Do. So you want to read those names and make a motion? I will, I will make. I'll try it again. I'd recommend Pam Polk, Janice Kane, and Daniel.
Tarken.
Tarkington as our three nominees.
Good candidates.
Do I have a second?
I'll second with reservations.
Motion as second.
Alvedras?
Nay.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Crone?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Agenda item number 11 is reports and comments from city manager and council.
Couple of things. First, I gave you a very short letter, very good news. The other good news is that neither attorney in this case with the IRS will file any claim. They feel that it's an error that they were a party to and should have caught earlier. But the letter you have shows a full release. We received all the documents back to our file, and the case is closed as far as IRS is concerned. And it did have to do with the interest, there was a, the form that was submitted entered an error on an inappropriate line, and that caused IRS to flag it, thinking that there was interest that we were earning that was ineligible. And so I think that's what happened, and it flagged our bond issue, and after their review and the explanation by Ms. Wong, they've accepted that explanation. And we are submitting an amended form to just keep the record clear. So as far as the IRS is concerned, the case is resolved. Issue's resolved.
What'd that cost the city?
Nothing, other than the printing and our time submitting the documents.
Thank you.
The other item, I'd like for David to come up and give you an update on the citywide cleanup that was held on Earth Day last Saturday.
Seems like I just saw y'all. The cleanup this weekend, I think, was very successful. Some of the numbers we got, and I think the guys at the transfer station earned their money that day. From the count, we had cars coming in the door, it was 175 vehicles over a nine-hour period. That's, I think it's one, about every three minutes to go through there. There was a lot of, a lot of, a lot of traffic going through. We had 52, or just under 52 tons of trash picked up, not including rocks and concrete, tree limbs, and CND that would be hauled off separately. So just the stuff alone, and the metal as well, would be separated from that. So 52 tons of garbage, trash, stuff that we really wanted to pick up at the transfer station. At the Activity Center, I haven't been here in the past, but what I understood is we set up some dumpsters at City Hall in the past and would allow people to dump into them. We wanted to take a little bit more proactive stance and try to make it easier for people to clean up some of the stuff. We're hoping that we could, if we could help them a little bit, make it a little easier, I would have a better turnout. So we did have some roll-offs at the Activity Center. We actually set up to where we'd accept tires, any hazardous waste, hazardous household waste, paints, chemicals, stuff like that, used oil, appliances, furniture, trees as well, hoping to help with the high storm cleanup, make it a little easier for people. And I'll have more detailed numbers in our report you'll get tomorrow, but I think we had about eight truckloads, big truckloads bundled down that were brought in from individuals just to that location, not including what came out to the, to the transfer station. We had about a truckload, one of those dump truckloads of tires, about three of them full of couches and mattresses and stuff like that. Some of them had grass and leaves growing up through them, so I'm assuming they were in, in somebody's yard somewhere, and they're not in there today. So I do appreciate that. But we got a lot of water heaters, and apparently there must be a sale on gas grills around because there was a lot of gas grills delivered to us, and charcoal grills, a lot of stuff, old burnt-out ones, which is just, you know, junk around houses. But we picked up a lot of those, all different odd, odd things, but our staff did a real good job. What we tried to do is if somebody pulled up with a pickup full of stuff, staff jumped on it and started sorting, and the customers sometimes would help out. A lot of times, we had them unloaded, more or less, before they could get out of the truck. And we got, got a lot of good thank-yous. We had several elderly ladies that came up in their car and had a little bit of something in their trunk, and they popped it, we got the stuff out, put it up. They didn't have to pick it up or handle it, paint, chemicals. People were very concerned about what to do with it, so. We had people hauling limbs in the backseat of their cars, doing their part to clean up their mess, and I appreciate that. I mean, honestly, if it was my limb, I don't know that I would have lugged that up and hauled it off. It was tiny, but we had people bringing one or two little limbs, but they're doing their part to clean up the community, and I appreciate that. According to the numbers we got from Main Street Guyman, who helped coordinate a lot of the volunteers and our staff and different people, we had about 140 volunteers. Not all of them worked that day. Some of them worked a couple of weeks in advance, just when it fit their businesses, and I'll have a list of that in detail more in our report tomorrow. But 140 people went out on their own in their own time and picked up trash, picked up things. We had groups going out and picking up limbs in people's yards that had problems, they couldn't get to them, I put on a list, which was a great thing. We had some high school kids, it seemed like there were seven or eight of them, guys and girls, and they worked out towards Goodwill on the side of the road. We saw them leave that morning, and they came back with their trash, and had to chastise some of them because the girls looked like they worked harder than the guys. And of course, I had to tell the guys about it while they were there. But they had about 35 bags of trash that these high school kids went out on their own and picked up, you know, and I'm very proud for the community and proud for them for doing that. But there were lots of groups, it was college groups. Martin, y'all all know Martin, he knows how to get work out of people, so he told them somebody lost $400 at Walmart, it's out there and it ditched somewhere. So they worked real hard. Of course, now they'll probably see it on TV and say it's down Martin, but anyway, we got a lot of, a lot of things picked up. A lot of staff worked very hard, and I think it was a good thing for us to go out and man those things, work those hours, and just help people bring some things in. It was just a great, great event overall.
Is that a once-a-year event or twice a year, or?
I think they do twice a year. I think they do twice a year, one in the spring and then one in the fall. It doesn't have to be.
Would it... I was gonna say, would it be beneficial to maybe once a quarter or something?
Well, in the wintertime, you won't get much activity.
Well, it's true.
And we were talking about it as we were out there, seeing how many people were coming. Honestly, just now, it's really starting to get green. It's starting to get springtime. People are thanking. Kids are still in school. Kids are still in college. There's things going on. Sometime in the summer, I think we would get another great turnout, possibly get little drier times. And it was cold that morning. We had people out there in that temperature bringing stuff in. The way I look at it, you know, we accept this stuff for free. We don't charge them for those specific things, but they're paying trash bills. If we can get them to clean up things we want them to clean up, not dump it in the alley, not dump it... And what happens is they dump it in their neighbor's alley. And it's kind of hard to persecute... Prosecute a lady who has a bunch of junk behind her house, and she didn't own that junk to start with. So, it's very hard. It's illegal dumping is what a lot of people do. If we can get them an opportunity and make it easier for them to pick that up and clean that, it saves staff. It makes the community look better, keeps the alleys clean. It's just a win-win situation. Ultimately, you pay for disposal, but if we go pick it up ourselves, then you still pay for disposal. So, I don't think there's any... Any dollar lost, honestly, to do it. We have some extra time associated with going out and doing the work, but I think it's a great thing. We had a lot of great compliments, people thanking us for helping them, and our guys did a great job doing that, so.
Do we have anybody's available to dispose of used motor oil?
I think they take it at the transfer station, but I don't know for sure. I think Seward County has got a hazardous trailer for chemicals and stuff like that, so we would take that. But I have to follow up to make sure.
If you would, I'd appreciate that. You know, a lot of people still go out and dump it in the alley.
Yeah, we don't... We don't really like that.
No.
But, you know, chemicals... What a lot of people don't know is if you... If you're a homeowner and you take some pesticide out or herbicide, and you spray it in your yard, and you have a little bit left in a container, it's perfectly okay to drop that in the dumpster. They're called a small quantity generator is the term, because that small amount in hazardous waste mixed with everything, put it into a laner, into a landfill is not a problem. Commercial businesses cannot do that, and it's highly illegal for somebody to dump 55-gallon drone. But in the small amounts, it's really not a problem for small amounts. So, it doesn't hurt for that. And it's because of... An individual doesn't have to be licensed. Anybody licensed couldn't do that. But we do set paint and some other things out there as well.
Do you think we need to reestablish a... You can dump for free under a certain weight limit at the transfer station, in your opinion?
I don't think so, honestly. What we were having, we're having commercial people that are for-profit businesses that were coming in, gaming the system a little bit, I guess you could say, bringing 990 pounds of stuff and filling up things, when they should have been charged commercial rates, and that's why we changed it. And a lot of the stuff that they bring in is additional. If you... If you start doing it across the board, there are certain people in town that don't create as much stuff as those who actually do it. So, if you cut that revenue source, then you have to raise everybody's rate to cover the few people that are doing additional dumping. So, there's... Like I mentioned, there's a couple elderly ladies. I guarantee they don't make much trash. But if we do a rate to cover all the costs, those people will have to pay for businesses, roofers, framers, people that have 10 kids and a bunch of pools and trash to do. By doing that, it lets people pay their fair share on a little more equal basis instead of a flat rate for everybody. So, I kind of like it that way. But that's... It's up to y'all. We make recommendations, and we will follow whatever you would like us to do.
Thank you.
You know, I got one more thing. Since we're talking about the master plan, we've talked to y'all about hiring a planner to come in. We get into the implementation phase. David Klapp-Saddle will be here starting work on the eighth, which will be the Monday. He's gonna come in the afternoon of the fourth, and he's gonna get to enjoy Pioneer Day. So, he's gonna learn about Gaiman, or at least the way Gaiman is on that weekend. Let's put it that way. But he's all excited about coming here, and he's got a planning background. And so, what he will do is he's the one that will be meeting with people. He'll be meeting with staff. He'll be meeting with council about how do we want to implement this? You know, now we have a big picture when you get down to, do we want to change ordinances? Do we need to change capital improvement plans? How do we want to move forward? And it's really... It's y'all's plan. So, let's just say you wanted to do a walking trail, and the council all felt they wanted to do a walking trail. And you found a way to fund the walking trail, or wanted us to look for potential funding. If that was your focus, then he would be the one to try to get out and figure out, where do we put the walking trail? That's part of the planning. You get the community involved. Where do we put it? How do we design it? What is its use? Is it just walking? Is it a walking biking trail? Is it for something else? How do you handle that? And so, that gets into the implementation part. Ultimately, it goes back to what y'all said. Y'all... It's y'all's plan as leaders of the community. So, give some direction. We'll get community input. He's the guy that will be meeting with them. I haven't met him in person. I've seen him on video conferencing back and forth. He seems like one of those people that's just happy to be alive. You know, he's just excited. He talks about it. He had looked up Gaiman. He had got on Google Street View and drove through the neighborhoods on the computer. He said, "I learned how to do that." He could tell you about menus and restaurants, anything on the web, he could find out. He could tell you about stuff. He had really invested some time into it before he accepted this job, and I think he's gonna be a great asset. He'll be working out here with us. He'll be working closely with Kevin and any other staff as far as the implementation phase. And as we go through, if we go to a downtown plan or a parks plan or whatever, he will be person to help coordinate the meetings and be involved in all of that. As he gets here, I'll introduce him to y'all, and y'all can spend time with him as you have available.
Thank you.
Any other reports or committees?
I have a couple more. I'm sorry. We've had a couple discussions about boards and commissions and how they function and how we appoint members. If you are agreeable, we'd like to have a workshop, the second meeting in May, to talk about that issue. I think the second May meeting is May 25. And what I'd like to suggest is that we have the council meeting first and then the workshop after. So, if we get into some discussion, then we don't have to worry about time limit if that happens. So, that would be my suggestion. Because some of the... Some of the boards and commissions are functioning required by the council. Others are advisory, and so, I think it'd be worthwhile to have that discussion. And then the final is, I have lots of tickets, thanks to the Chamber of Commerce. Had a packet delivered to my office, and I wasn't quite sure what to do with it. But I've handed out the all-access pass to each of you. Also have some tickets for the box office seats. There are sets of four for those. Anyone's interested, let me know. Then we have some admission tickets. So, let me know what your interest is. If the council members aren't interested, then I would like to try to do some sort of a lottery or something and hand them out to the employees. So, I have those available in my office. Thank you.
Any other comments? Reports or comments?
I have some, Mayor. David, staff, thank you. Thank you for the cleanup efforts, and I'm with Mr. Cron on having it more often. That would be great. From what transpired today, I just... I want to... I want to make the public aware that we do have a handbook that we try to follow. It's a handbook for city and town officials. And just to summarize what the council's duties are, we establish policy, pass local ordinances, and create an overall vision. If anybody in the public thinks that anybody on the council is acting out of range, then I would... I would ask them to let the city manager know. Thank you.
Any other reports or comments?
I drove out by the airport today. I've got a couple. Drove out by the airport to look at the project, and I want to commend Pete Hedrick in the Parks Department. Thompson Park looks probably as well as it's ever looked, getting ready to go into the Pioneer Day weekend. And Martin Hernandez in the Streets Department, I've been noticing at night when I go home, they've got barricades up and lights out, and they're painting streets at night, so it's safer downtown. So, I want to thank those dedicated staffers and employees for the hard work they do and also the dedication of their job for the loss of time that they have with their families at night. Any other reports or comments? Any new business? If not, we'll stand adjourned as the Gaiman City Council. We'll re-adjourn as the Gaiman... We'll re-adjourn as the... Reconvene as the regular meeting of the Gaiman Utilities Authority. Already done Agenda Item Number Two, Public Comments and Announcements. Agenda Item Number Four is discussion and possible action on approval of Change Order Number Four for DBNE for a decrease of $276,662 for the new water well number 35 project. Change orders attached and documentation. Is there any discussion, comments, questions, motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Change Order Number Four for DBNE for the decrease of $276,662.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Cron.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda Item Number Five is discussion and possible action on approval of pay requests number two in the amount of $158,245.30 for the new water well project, number 35 project. Pay request is attached.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think approval of this pay request would effectively close out that project. Correct, Rick?
There's $11,000 in the payments that will also come in on subsequent pay.
But in effect, that will close out the work on that project, right? Thank you.
Any questions, motion?
I make a motion that we approve Pay Request Number Two in the amount of $158,245.30, item five.
Have a motion.
I'll second.
Second, I mean.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Cron.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Well, before we get to new business, everybody's wondering what this is. For that, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, if you're familiar with the Murrah bombing, there's a tree across the street called a survivor tree. It's between there and the Journal Record Building. And each year, the Department of Ag, foresters collect the seeds that that seed produces. They plant those, and they try to produce 300 seedlings a year. Well, this year, on the 22nd anniversary of the bombing, I got a text from Secretary Jim Reese of the Department of Agriculture. And he was also on the Regents. He was coming out to Gaiman for a Regents meeting, and he said, "Mayor, does Gaiman have a survivor tree?" And I said, "No, we don't." He said, "I'm bringing you one." He brought us one and a college one. "We're gonna probably warehouse this or greenhouse it or keep it inside for some time to get it a better root system established." But it was a very touching moment. We've had... We had one lady from Gaiman that was one of my Sunday School teachers and worked at the school, I think, and around town, Rita Bender Long, that was killed in that. She worked for the Department of Ag. They found her, I think, after about three weeks. But anyway, that was, to me, quite a touching symbolism. So, we'll work on a proper place to plant it, have a ceremony or something when we do it. So, that's what that tree's about. A lot of people don't... Have saw me carrying in the pot, and it's got, I don't know how many leaves it's got on it. So, I thought that was pretty touching there. I want to do the thing before we go to new business, if I can find it, just in case. Very good, Mr. Alvedres.
I'm gonna need it. I'm gonna need it.
Mr. Alvedres is participating, hopefully, in one of the Oklahoma City Marathon races this weekend, and so, be watching for him on TV.
At the very end.
At the very end. Any new business? Is there any new business? Any new business? If not, we're adjourned. Thank everybody for coming.